About addressing 2.1 and 2.2 kind of together.
Okay.
I don't know the house normally need to be about that.
All right, it's a. Pardon me? Okay. Kind of looks you off the hook a little bit. Are we on Zoom? Are we going to be on Zoom? But it's. Can I get logged in? Yeah, just by going to the city website?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's so funny.
I'm trying to make sure everyone can. Yeah. This is. The rougher material is this more.
I hope that's my.
One second, everybody. Logging in here. I'm loving it. Okay, I'm in.
You want to mute it?
Yeah. Turn it on. Yep. So we will call the study session of March 3rd to order. Roll call, please.
Councilor Coley.
Here.
Councilor.
Here.
Councilor Medina.
Here.
Councilor Castillo.
Here.
Councilor Byers.
Here.
Councilor Parry Miller.
Here.
And the mayor, Harris Flood.
Here.
Mayor Yuvan Coram.
Thank you, Hector. The next items are 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3. And it's the goal-setting retreat items. I'm just going to hand the agenda over to the city manager. And you can just manage those items as you as you go along.
Excellent.
Alex?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I felt what I would do is quickly go through the memo that was largely prepared by Gary, but also then supplemented by staff. And to make sure that you all understand how we operated vis a vis the the three sort of headline goals that are on page one. And I thought that might be a good point to stop for discussion. And then depending on the pleasure of the council, we could, if there are specific items in the more detailed. Well, I've got some items that I could highlight in the more detailed work packet, if you would like me to step through that. But I thought it made sense to sort of start at the high the high level first. So Gary, I think Gary was actually pleased to see the second version of this memo and said, oh, we got a few more things done than I had remembered. So in the the first the first goal that really is largely about the fiscal health of the of the city. The the water cost of service and G study was completed and 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 implementation was started for for bringing those rates up to properly cover service costs. Several several staff roles were outsourced to produce a leaner personnel budget. In somewhat the opposite direction, but still in the direction of lowering costs. We have Gary Brown, Yao Ying, who is full time and doing a tremendous amount of engineering work that we're paying and a lot of it we're paying quite a bit more for on a per hour basis previously. The the grant funding has, of course, been pursued quite aggressively. And in terms of getting ready for economic development that would produce larger or not larger, but additional tax revenues and other kinds of revenue. Gary commissioned an economic opportunity analysis that I just got the final draft of today that I'm looking forward to presenting to you all. The buildable lands inventory work is complete and it's ready ready for review. And should I should I pause there or continue through the the three the three goals?
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
So the economic opportunities analysis now in draft form, what who who's been doing that?
Oh, I'm afraid I was afraid you might ask me that. The the outfit is out of Southern Cal and Gary had worked with them previously. Starts with a K.
Yeah, I I know. Yeah, yeah, okay. Thanks. That that rings a bell now. Thank you.
So continue at a high level in terms of the gate the gateway and Dangness and West Valley View project.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Can I ask?
Oh, please.
Before. This, I think, would be to Tessa. After the water fees study. What other studies are high priority on your list for please?
That'll be parks, streets. Off the top of my head. Let's take a look at SDCs. We have to look at other fees. Let's say, for instance, things that we would charge like for NSF charges. We need to look at our planning fees. We need to look at any kind of fees that PD would be charging for. We started pulling together. It's right now. It's been it's been tabled for on from my point of view. Probably the next couple of weeks, but it's going to be back to the front burner. We are going to be putting together a comprehensive fee schedule for Council to see. And then we're going to be we're going to be comparing those fees to other municipalities here in Southern Oregon. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
I could tag on to that a little bit. We had some discussion with the council leadership group about perhaps adjusting the public safety fee just to account for inflation as part of that fee schedule adoption. So we have some clarity going into the budget process. And then do a more full-blown analysis of really where it ultimately needs to be next year.
I have a follow-up question on that. So just for clarification, we're talking about prioritizing public safety fee and then looking at the whole fee schedule. After that. Or as part of that.
As part of this spring, updating the whole fee schedule to do an initial increase in the public safety fee to just account for inflation. And then next year, do a more full-blown public involvement, public discussion about whether and if we want to the city, you all want to increase the public safety fee to something more similar to where Medford is that's really fully, you know, coming closer to fully accounting for the cost of public safety.
Perfect. Thank you.
So in terms of the the second very large priority area that that you all had identified here, the gateway thingness, West Valley View project. Obviously, a big piece of that project is dealing fairly and yeah, I think I'll just leave it fairly with the the current occupants. So just about 30 of those trailers have been moved or sold. But I the trailer's gone and the and the folks living in that trailer are also gone. So we have about 18 families or occupants still on site. Nine of those have not requested an extension. And we do not have a firm plan with them as yet. Nine of them have been have had their trailers conveyed to them and have a clear plan for what they're going to do with that. Nine of them have been have had their trailers conveyed to them and have a clear plan for what they're going to do with that. And we we have, sorry. I've I messed that up. 18 that have been conveyed, and then there are six that we have access, hasn't been able to get communication with. So we're going to continue working with them, of course. And now we we understand that it's council's priority and direction to get that site in a condition that we can proceed with redevelopment. But we are, we're doing that in a manner that we can help those folks find their next their next spot.
I have a follow-up on that. Thank you, thank you, Alex.
On the numbers just before.
Yes.
Yeah. So just to make sure I was tracking that correctly, 30 trailers have been conveyed in one form or another. We have 24 trailers left. Of those 24, 18 have been moved but not yet moved, and six are still awaiting contact.
Thank you for redoing the math for me.
Thank you.
I appreciate I appreciate your comments about about the six that there is not, there's still remaining contact to be had and plans to be made. And if there and the the possibility of asking for an extension, I just think for the purpose of the record, we should be taught. I just would like everybody to recognize that this would be a second extension that we would be providing if that were the event.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Penamrith?
Yeah, and just to further clarify, this is this is access is doing this work. The city is not doing this.
That's correct.
So they would be, if there was an extension.
I'm sorry. The access is doing the direct communications with the tenants in terms of and occupants, in terms of assisting them in identifying their next step. Our staff has been doing a lot of the work in terms of the conveyance of the units.
Right, okay.
It's it is important. I think what you just said adds to the thought that if we do another extension for the six, it would be an extension with access extending their contract, correct?
I think, yes.
Another extension to the contract, okay.
We would want to continue those services.
Counselor Medina and then Counselor Penamrith.
So just to clarify, the city's role is more like the paperwork part of just and access is more like the people who actually helped them relocate the trailer, is that correct?
Correct.
Counselor Penamrith?
Yeah, so the the dead, currently, the contract is up in at the in August, is it? End of August, end of August? Okay. So so far, there's only six people without a plan. And we're in March, in the very beginning of March. So nobody's indicated that we need to do any kind of an extension at this point, have they?
I I am hopeful that we would not.
Feels like there's plenty of time to make contact with folks.
I I would agree with that and say that it would seem that way. There've been a lot of efforts to contact these folks and and they haven't necessarily been responsive to those efforts yet. But I I I'm hopeful that we will not be coming to a request for an extension.
Okay, and member or Counselor Coley, in just a second, I just I just was clarifying a comment about the extension earlier in the conversation, Counselor Penamrith, just FYI. Okay, Counselor Coley?
I think you answered my question, but you're saying those six people not necessarily don't have a plan, but they have not, they've been communicated with, but have not communicated back to access, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. We we through access, we were pretty clear that we we did want some indication from everybody that was interested in having a trailer conveyed to them. So that was sort of the soft deadline of don't remember whether it was the beginning of March or the end of March that that deadline was set for. And but but those, yeah, anyway. That's the that they these folks have, I think, generally been hard to communicate with, you know.
Thank you, Alex.
Sure. And of course, the city was very successful in receiving funding for this this project. And the Town Urban Renewal Board has done a lot of work with the consultant at Brinkweek to to prepare for putting out an RFP to get a developer on board. Was there again? And then in terms of the third area, establishing and or upgrading basic internal administrative systems. The we are working on but have not nearly completed, it's a big project. The personnel policies and procedures update. There there has been a lot of progress on getting a facility maintenance schedule for the core city buildings and and Doc's been executing on that. Tess has done quite a bit of work on a vehicle replacement plan, so we are preparing to include those a more accurate reflection of those costs in in next year's budget. Hector's done a lot of work to consolidate our procurement records. So we've got a single point of contact to to review those. And you all established a lease rate policy. There's still plenty to do in this in this arena, including getting one of the things that's high on my list, that's not necessarily called out in the the current way it is written, is a comprehensive certain doing the similar work with city policies that we've done with contract. So we have a lot of policies that live in different areas. We don't always know where to go to see if we already have a policy in a given area. And then, so.
I have.
Yeah, please, please.
Yeah. One thing I would say is on policies that may have happened in the last 10 years or so, checking if you've looked for them, check with me because sometimes they're in my email. And I still have all that email archived. And then establishing the lease rates for nonprofits renting city-owned. We have, we established the rates, but I don't think we established a policy, which is what you're just mentioning. And but I do think it would be a good idea for us to do that and put that in the queue, or I mean, key it up for this conversation, maybe.
Sure.
Or queue it up for this conversation. Thanks.
Of course. And so in terms of some of the some of the other areas that we've that weren't necessarily called out, but certainly seem high priorities and some that were called out that we have not made as much progress on. So I think everybody, planning commission and others are anxious to get to Title 11, 17, and 18 updates. And we were not able to do that this year. And I might actually take a little bit of a detour here to go one of the more detailed work plan. That's more as listed as affordable housing, but there's a lot of long-range planning here. And as as our work plan sits today and the process that's been completed today, we really queued up the buildable lands and the and the railroad district change, which actually isn't listed here. But those those are both key things to complete before we go to the housing needs analysis. And that's really been prioritized.
So we're at the we're referencing the table right now, goal one table, which is the orange band.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The the code changes on Highway 99, I'm confident that we will get to. Those are being viewed up very well for us by the consultants. The the Title 18 and 17 is hard for me to see that we get to, certainly in this calendar year, as long as we continue to prioritize that buildable land inventory, the larger the larger challenges of the of the urban growth management area boundary and the housing needs analysis. So those were both prioritized in my in last year's work. And they're obviously both important, but there is sort of an order of that work. And we wanted to highlight that as one of the sessions that you all may want to.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? So just for clarification, the the purpose of prioritizing buildable lands and housing needs analysis is so that we can we can review bringing in urban reserves, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
And so I guess the question I would ask and bring, the answer can come back at any meeting.
Yeah.
Would be just wanting to make sure that we had a timeframe between pursuing urban reserves and actually bringing them in to finish 17 and 18 because of how important 17 and 18 will be once those lands are in to be completed. I hope that makes sense so that I think there'll be a gap when we begin that work. I I would hope we'd be writing a grant for that. I would hope that the grant would come as part of the Highway 99 project, although that might just be a wish. The revisioning project. But in either case, if there's a gap, identifying it ahead of time for the purpose of doing 17 and 18. If if I understand the order of things. Counselor Penamrith?
That I think you nailed it, understanding the order of things. It would be nice to have a document that showed a timeline and dependencies of all of this documentation and also indicated, you know, where where we're at funding. So much of this is grant-funded DLCD for us. And also the constraints. If there's CFA, C F E climate family area deadline coming up, that should be part of this. Do you see the graph I see in my mind? So the documents, the timeline, even though, you know, we don't timelines always shift, but you know, just kind of like you know, basic project management, so we can see it from that point of view rather than just a list. And and if I may, I thought buildable lands inventory was done.
The staff works. But my, I believe it still has not been approved by planning commission nor nor the council.
Okay, it's with the planning, okay.
And thank you, Counselor, very much for that. I actually had CFA as a note down here that we have to do that this year and forgot to mention it. And that that process, I think, will be very helpful for us as we're getting ready for a TGM pre-application, transportation growth management funding is very likely possible funding opportunity for several of these pieces. So that is very timely work for us to be doing.
I just want to say for the benefit of this group, I think this is actually in the order through that we really need to do that. I mean, I think the order is is here. I could be wrong.
I just say a housing needs analysis again, if that's next.
You don't know if housing needs analysis is B, would be the second in order? The only reason I would say that is because I would rather, I would hope that we would have the housing needs analysis in place before we adopt Title 17. Before we do any zoning code changes, I would hope that that housing needs analysis would be done. But that does bring me to that point. Actually, I think I just lost my I took myself down a rabbit hole and lost my point.
Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
This, I mean, I my hope for this session was to get to exactly sort of these kinds of things.
Yeah.
Right? Specific questions of high importance that we we probably need to do some more work on as staff to get to to bring back to you. So I'm I'm really comfortable with the spotlight.
On this?
On this.
Yeah, great.
And we'll come back and review it with you all.
I guess I just want to emphasize that I would hope that we would get Title 17 completed before we actually before we actually annex. Yeah.
Can you explain why Title 17 is important for this? Because I I I do get Title 17 and Title 18 mixed up.
Well, Title 18 are like the building codes and the and and Title 17 is is more about the the different zones. And so you know, just making sure that we're zoning property correct. I the urban reserves on some level are predetermined as part of the urban reserve process. But if any of that, if any of that would be subject to change, like medium, a part of it should be high density instead of medium density, like the stuff on the highway. And I haven't looked at the urban reserves in a long time. It'd be really good to have both the housing needs analysis and 17 queued up.
And I and I can see, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can see that as a dependency, as a desired dependency to show in this graph. I also thought that there was something at the state level that we were holding off in the housing needs analysis because certain rules needed to be figured out. I think that may have already happened.
It did happen and it gave us, well, I don't know if it's all done, but what we did get, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, is we got we got the we got our targets, but I don't think they've defined them in terms of the types of housing that those targets are.
I I believe Counselor Penamrith is correct that there is some some specific rulemaking on housing needs analysis that is ongoing. That I I think my recollection from a discussion with Josh LaBombard is probably will run most of the remainder of this calendar year. What I want to do is get some plant, you know, some some experienced planners who are up to date to help us think through what all these dependencies are and what the best order.
But isn't that work that's being done at the state level going to determine how, I mean, isn't it for the purpose of determining housing types for these targets?
It's substantively, I think you're correct. But and it is also going to set some of the procedural rules for actually how you do the analysis.
Yeah.
So it's going to be hard to do the analysis in in advance of those rules.
Which is not a bad thing, I don't think, but it sort of sounds like clear and objective standards that our planning commission loves so much. All right, Counselor Penamrith?
So do we, is it going to be RV cog, somebody at RV cog that's going to be doing this work for us?
That, I think that's part of part of the work plan that I need to do. Potentially the RV cog support we have right now, I think is good. It's not necessarily expert in some of the more esoteric portions of Oregon Land Use Law. So I think a long, I mean, as consultants, you know, is part of this analysis. I think we may may want some fairly specialized consultant work. And it may, that expertise may be at RV cog or it may not. Sorry, that was a long.
No, no. Maybe it's good. It's good information. Well, I I just have one remaining question. And I if the it would be nice to know what the state's timeline on that housing needs analysis rulemaking is. Because if it if it if it takes longer than kind of our the gap that I was talking about earlier, we should probably know about that ahead of time, just because I just do think that 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 new land coming in need, we just need to have our rules in place before it actually gets in the city. So that goes, takes us back to the timeline. Counselor Penamrith?
I'd also like to request that the an update to our 2015 TSP be part of that timeline, because I do think there is some dependencies in there as well, certainly with client family areas, that sort of thing, at least there was. All my information is at least two or three years old at this point. But yeah, it'd be good because that's another important document that interplays.
Absolutely. It was it was actually on a different sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I I think all the planning stuff probably belongs on one sheet, so we can look at it together.
Right, the the guiding documents.
Yes.
I think it's on the teal colored seat.
It's on the transportation page.
Yeah, under transportation appropriately, but but still, I think the chart I'm looking for is all the the documentation that we need consultants for that we have to sign off on before, you know, about planning the city.
Yeah, I mean, perfectly said, Counselor Penamrith. I mean, what you're talking about is that separate timeline that brings all those, all of these different schools together in a way that they don't, that they're complementary and not conflicting.
Yeah, we understand the dependencies and what's funded and what isn't. And with the understanding that we understand things move. I just want to say that people are like, oh, we don't want to put it on a date on it. I just want to say, people are like, oh, we don't want to put it on a date on it, because then you'll come and yell at us for moves. We understand like any project manager that things will be. So.
Thank you. Any further comments on this?
Good, so, um, we, um, definitely, uh, intend and plan to and are starting to think about um, the community involvement process. Uh, advisory structure that we might need to, um, to look at, uh, the public safety fee.
Are we back to the memo?
Sorry, yes, but going back, going back to the memo. Um, the other high priority, so the second bullet there was the, um, the public safety fee. Um, and or, I mean, I, I see the, last time you were talking about, uh, possibility of a property tax measure, I don't want to jump to that conclusion too quickly there. Um, so both, both demonstrating the need and having, you know, demonstrating that we've considered alternatives, I think are important.
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
Uh, sorry, I, I hate to just keep derailing you, I, but I, did you say the priority is demonstrating the need, right? And then, is that what you said? Did I hear that right?
I, um, yeah, I, I think that, I think that's correct. And what I was correcting myself in saying is, I was talking about this in terms of only a public safety fee. That, that we shouldn't, I shouldn't be presuming what the right funding solution is if we do demonstrate the need.
Gotcha. Thank you. I didn't quite catch that.
And, uh, Chief Snook, um, is anxious to update our emergency operations plan and is very supportive of, um, of supporting establishment of CERT. But think that there probably are challenges to, to certainly this, um, our discussion today was there's, there's certainly resource challenges, particularly to this, this supporting CERT effectively at current staffing levels.
Council Penamriff?
And I, I alerted to my confusion about this. So last year, the year before, the Jackson County, we did all their, um, emergency planning and there was a talented addendum. And I somehow thought that that was our emergency plan. So, so what I wanted to understand this, the emergency operations plan, I, just in layperson's term, what does that provide that the county one that we worked on does not provide?
Um, the E O P emergency operations plan basically says who's in charge of the emergency. Uh, it outlines the structure, so it would be the police chief, the city manager, and then it outlines the roles of the council or mayor as well during an emergency. And it also has, um, ba- basically the attachments with all the forms that you would need to reference during an emergency. So the one you're referencing that we worked on last year is the natural hazard mitigation plan, which um, basically outlines what our area, um, what kind of disasters we're prone to in this area. And, um, what we've done to mitigate some of those, like, you know, the greenway trimming down uh, the brush and so forth. Um, and then it also outlines like, but what facilities that we have in our community that, um, could be potential hazards like gas stations. Um, there's, used to be, uh, the place on the corner of San wasting, Sopac that had the, it was the old, um, orchard, so they stored chemicals there.
Sorry, which plan is that? Is that the county?
Leslie N H M P.
Okay.
Yes, that basically says what we're vulnerable to. And then the E O P says how we're going to respond and prepare for those disasters.
Okay, and if I could follow up, so there is an existing plan that hasn't been updated since?
Our E O P, uh, please don't quote me, but I don't know. I think it was two thousand or one, um, ten, maybe?
Okay, so it wasn't updated as a result of the fire or anything like that?
No, Jackson County, uh, contracted the, the there's. And so the plan that we have is a plan that was done countywide, um, years ago. Um, Jackson County has some elevated values, but we have not.
I think we had our, in the twenty nineteen goals, wasn't it? Or in the twenty twenty goals, it was in one of those years. Right before the fire, it was in the goals to update. All right, it was under Santa's, Santa's letter, uh, espelacy.
Thank you.
The, uh, updated transportation system plan is, is, uh, noted in where, um, the, and I, I think not to beat a dead horse, but I look forward to going back with you all in our next session and, and really look at all of the long-range planning, uh, work and make sure that we're, that we've got uh, your input on how, how to tackle those and in which order.
Can I, um, also mention a follow-up? I think one of the good things that we could talk about in goal-setting would just be along the same lines that we've talked about, a schedule for fees, a schedule for, you know, and, um, we may have even mentioned this already, but just having a schedule um, of all of the different elements of our, of our planning, um, comp plans, emergency plans, those things that require, are required to be updated on a periodic basis. Um, just something that the staff can rely on for a reminder when those things need to happen would be really good. And a way for staff members to be able to, um, well, a way for the, to memorialize that in such a way that future staff members could could easily find that as well. Council Penamriff?
Yeah, and while we're on this, talking about all cool things we can do. Um, I think like a study session where we talk about the documentation, the doc, those kinds of documents and what they provide for us. Um, uh, would be, you know, just kind of like one slide on each one and talk about why it's useful and why we need it. Just to kind of get everybody to have all of that, you know, kind of present. I think that'd be a really good study session. We could even drill into some of the things that are super important and why.
Great, yeah.
Great. Obviously, or maybe not obviously, but, uh, Tess has been doing a lot of work on historic town hall uh, renovation and use, and you're going to be talking about that at the study session on Wednesday. And the tennis slash pickleball courts, um, I did want to highlight for you, I Tony, uh, Baron was here last Friday. Um, he's been our primary consultant on park, uh, applications. His rank assessment was that that is a standalone project, it's going to be challenging. Probably doesn't score great. Um, that it's the, the larger rejuvenation of the park as a whole that he thought really should be put forward. Um, and given, given the many things on folks' plates right now, did not, I did not direct him to go ahead and start preparing that, that grant application.
That tracks with, I'll be back about security grant funding for that.
So, yeah. It, does that mean that we won't be pursuing any grants this year for, uh, for that? I think it's closing pretty soon, right? Isn't it the end of March?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
His other caution was with the skate park having an open grant is, is maybe, we may be less competitive uh, this round as well. So, um, I thought would be to wait until we complete the current grant to pursue the next one.
Um, I, I'm really, I'm, I'm not disappointed to hear that, uh, and I think you make a fine point about having an open grant, but I do think this informs our goal-setting for this for this year, um, in terms of, of how, how we want to pursue those kinds of actions for next year. Um, and I mean, Council Byers knows way more about that than I do in terms of what the park's priorities are, but it does, it does seem like putting together some sort of plan for next year might, might be in order. Based on, based on the master plan, of course.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, really, it's, to that point, in the last parks meeting, the discussion very much was how much they really prioritize the water recapturing, um, project for the splash pad, which I do think could be grant fundable based on, um, you know, uh, various conservation grants out there and, um, environmental sustainability grants for the city. And then second, right below it was the tennis courts. Um, and then the community input, of course, tennis courts slash pickleball courts are very important as is the larger dark park. Like, those are like the three water conservation courts.
Good to hear. Council Colay?
Just a comment to that too. I don't know like what the different funding mechanisms are, but it sounds like, I don't know if those are, could all be a package thing. Just for ease of funding or ease of staff time with design or, you know, interruptions, like all those are big projects that are going to have, you know, impacts on the park, so.
Which was why the, the commissioners wanted to do an entire advised update to the master plan instead of doing it once now, so it could be really looked at really holistically and.
Great, thank you.
The, um,
Alex, can I ask you one more question? Is it easier for, should we just be writing down all of our questions for a question, for question breaks, or is this okay? Is this for working? Okay, good, all right.
As I was preparing for this meeting, I realized one thing that doesn't appear, uh, on here at all is the Town Community Revitalization Center. It's obviously going to take, um, some, uh, some, some staff time this year and that we're committed to executing and executing.
Is it the Resource Center or the Revitalization Center? I'm, is it the Resource Center? So on that note, just since you brought it up, I think, um, maybe talking about how we would maybe even as part of the E O P, I'm not sure, but the purpose of that building is to serve community through nonprofit activities and, uh, uh, unless, and until an emergency happens. And then there's, in our early discussions, it would be utilized by the city um, as probably under the, um, emergency declaration kind of a thing as a resiliency hub. Thank, but I struggled with that last piece. Um, so maybe coming up with part, what that resiliency hub would be for the city might be a good thing to work on as part of this, and I don't even know if it would actually fit into the emergency operations plan. Yeah. I, I just, didn't you, didn't you hear me just try to put the monkey on your back there, Chief? That was a smart move. Well played ninja.
Turning to the, um, to the more detailed list of projects. A lot of my notes were on this first, this first page that we, that we addressed. And I think we've talked about many or most of these things. The, I was curious, this is maybe not the best use of your time, but go for support healthy homes. I was not immediately clear what that was.
Yeah, that, can I speak to that?
Uh, Council Penamriff?
Yeah, so that was trying to capture some grant funding that was available to, um, to low, moderate income folks to, um, help to insulate the homes and, and you have saving lives so people wouldn't die of heat. Um, I think that's probably better under sustainability, like we had it under community safety. Um, I'm not sure where those grants are at. It would be basically, it's really the work of a nonprofit. Nonprofits are kind of doing that. It would be to kind of partner with, um, and maybe get a good talent. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say to add to that, I've seen a bunch of stuff of, uh, Jackson County, um, and I know some people that have done a home insulation program and like window upgrade program going around, so it might be an easier thing to, I don't know, facilitate with them somehow or do it as part of a committee like you said.
Started doing it, that's great. Um, I think when we wrote this, it was, it was newer and we weren't seeing it quite around so much. So, um, yeah, I think that would be like really deprioritized unless there was like a strong effort with the partner that we can say, yeah, we'll, we'll promote that.
Can I ask what page that's on?
Oh, I don't.
Bottom of page five.
Uh, my pages aren't numbered, so.
It's the, below, there's the pink page and then it's the next page after the pink banner.
Under, okay.
It's goal for.
Goal for.
Community safety.
Goal for community, support health and health. Okay, thank you.
And, um, I think the other thing that jumped out, or another thing that jumped out to me was the greenway accessibility the town, obviously, that the, um, the destination, uh, tourism planning work is related and should be acknowledged. I think within the, the, the work of the, uh, of staff as well.
And that is, um, yeah, where are we?
Sorry, I skipped several pages. I'm, I'm on.
We're.
Go on transportation.
Go on, go on transportation.
Yeah.
Okay. Dark blue.
And you want to add the destination plan to, to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Under goal one, the greenway.
Yeah.
Making it an action item.
Yeah, so it'd be A, B, C, D, E, F, G, right?
I do want to note on here that like, some of these things are a bit out of the city power, like the real road by.
Well, no, I think that's, I was gonna, on the real road thing, I was gonna prioritize that to an A. And the, the work we can do is, Gaiying was already on it, is, is to get more money for the construction. So we are working with ODOT, and so hopefully it wouldn't be, it's not a huge lift of staff time. But we want to try to get in there and get, get some money, uh, for the construction out of, it would be, uh, C N A C money.
What item is that?
It's action item B, under goal one on transportation.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor, I think you're, you're absolutely right. So the uh, Gaiying's preparing to get the signature on the grant agreement for the design work. Um, and that would put us in line, it's you, you all know how transportation, federal transportation works, it's multiple years, but we, we're working that process and that will take um, some important staff to support this year to keep us moving forward. In terms of community engagements.
I'm sorry, the transportation?
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to check in with safe routes to school. I don't know that we've been doing anything with that last year or two. I think we didn't score well or something. I'm just wondering if anybody thinks that, thinks that's worth pursuing versus some of these other ones. I'm not gonna advocate for it unless we think we can have a good chance of getting it. I'll ju, I'll just say as background before.
That's one of my.
Uh, the background is, uh, a couple of years ago, I went to some of the webinars and it seemed fairly easy to get. We did get a planning, uh, actually a pre-planning consultant to talk about what we needed at Foss Road and also the of the crosswalk between the two schools, and it, it was really helpful and it kind of geared us up for some additional work. Um, and the good thing is, is that like most of talent is within a mile of schools. And I think we tried for rap road, but there, it wasn't deemed unsafe enough to score well. Um, anyway. Safe routes.
Of all.
I know.
Council Colay?
Yeah, I guess just more clarification to understand this. So this was a action item of pursuing specific funding that could be applied to various projects. So the projects aren't necessarily not a priority anymore. It's just that this funding mechanism might not be worth keeping on. There's an action item. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I guess that's what I was asking, cause I, I mean, it does take time and, and I'm just wondering if the feeling of staff is like, oh, we have better, better shot at these other grants than, than maybe live safe routes to school alone for a while. I think it comes around every year.
So, y- yes, and it is, uh, it is a fairly straightforward process, but it is very competitive one in part because of that. Um, my understanding is the most sort of egregious piece The most sort of egregious piece of the safety issue has been addressed by the city, working with the school district. Um, so I think part of the motive. Uh, a, a significant piece of the motivation to pursue that grant was able to be addressed at, um, with a smaller project.
What was that project?
I, that's some improvements to that crosswalk.
Councilor Medina? Nope, Councilor Colay?
Yeah, so just maybe like a procedural question for how we're using this document and you are using this document and understanding it. So it seems like a lot of these things, like we have a goal and we have an action item, which is basically a project. And then somewhere in there, like funding mechanism is listed, but this seems like this is not necessarily a specific project. It's more of a potential funding mechanism. So would we maybe keep the priority, but change the name of it and put safe routes to school over in the funding column as an option? Or whoever's applying for the funding can. Cause I know the whole funding landscape is, you know, it's constantly changing. So there's a lot of these things where we have some specific grant listed in the funding column, but that might not be the correct avenue to go in.
Hey, Councilor, if I, I might respond, my, my thought about next step on, on this document is one. To come back with the one format. Rather than two different lists that are slight grouped slightly different ways to come back with one, uh, one set of. Projects and goals. With a shorter, fewer, fewer line items on it. Um, but include some line items that are just sort of future year things that we don't want to forget. They're important to the city, but they're not priorities for the twenty five, twenty six or whatever year it is. Um, that, um, so that, that's what I, my, my, what I was gonna pitch you all as a next step.
Any comments, any further comments on transportation, Councilor Panamarev?
Yeah, so E, improve walkability and create walkability plan. I think that was another one of mine. I'm not seeing it as super high. It, it seems to me almost more like maybe, you know, if the senior community group gets going, um, that they could work something with A R P. Do a walk audit, maybe it could be like a community or nonprofit effort to get going on it and show some interest. And then maybe crystallize. Uh, to something less, I mean, we have the traffic safety commission already looking at, you know. Things that are dangerous, right? So, um, I feel like this is a lower priority, something that maybe can even like kind of fall off the list unless other people. Uh, until it gets raised up by, uh, some, some community interests.
I, I would suggest that it belongs as part of the transportation systems plan.
I think it is. I mean, there's some, yeah, there is some walkabilities, there's some.
And, and there, this, although the T S P is, you know, governed by. Transportation planning rule, there. There's quite a bit of flexibility for the city to focus that study on the, your, your priorities, um, so.
Okay, so you're gonna fold it in.
I, that would be my.
I like that.
I think given gateway coming in, that, I mean, just having it, having it for no other reason, just a flag. Taking advantage of, of, um, perhaps the Wagner Creek extension and making sure that we.
Yeah, it's almost like a value.
The question.
Councilor Colay?
Yeah, just going back, I like what she said about how you're gonna bring this document or different documents back to us. But going back to, so we're talking about transportation and the goal under here is have better accessibility to talent. But it seems like many of these action items, like some of the walkability obviously mentioned. Is in relation to, you know, getting to the greenway, but like the transportation system plan, is that in and of itself? Like, should, should that be the main goal and these other almost. Smaller projects or? I guess I'm not understanding.
I think it's an excellent point.
The relationship of like that goal to the.
I think we just got tired of everything, so.
Yeah.
It's all there.
The goal is have good transportation.
Stop criticizing the.
Okay, any other questions on transportation?
Last one.
Yeah, Councilor Panamarev.
R V T D, um, again, that's just kind of maybe, uh, something that community members could do. Uh, it's really just a question, hey, when are we gonna get roots? But.
Yeah, I don't know, I feel like.
These are all mine.
No, no, route seven, I think was, was something that we were both talking about.
The additional bus shelters.
Yeah, and I don't, I think it, um, it's just a matter of conversations with R V T D.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if we could get an update from them or something, or maybe between staff like on ridership. And if they have like a needs analysis of this existing route and.
They have great plans and stuff, I bet they could give us a, um, a presentation.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I mean, only if they have it in their capacity. I don't think, I just, just getting like if they have an analysis, that's, that's fresh enough. I just would like to see it and to see what. I mean, this is a partnership definitely to get that route put into place and whether or not they see that as a priority of theirs. Just getting an update on that maybe, so I don't know if that's a goal as much as just like a task.
Yeah.
Councilor Panamarev?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Councilor Byers, I heard you say bus shelters, but I didn't hear what you said about bus shelters.
Oh, I said I was the one that wanted, I had suggested putting to do an additional bus shelters.
Were we talking about the Cobb bus shelter?
Dave just brought that up, he's like, what happened to the Cobb?
Yeah, that was the coolest project.
But that's just one, man.
And it was R V T D's project, we were just like.
You know, it was, it was Chris ours and he lives in the community and he, he put it on the back burner.
Okay.
I recall you were talking about covered bus shelters as well, yeah.
I mean, it, in the winter or when it's really hot.
Yeah, I think there's only a couple in town and the rest of them are just open up. If there's a place to sit, it's uncovered, but most of the time there's no place to sit.
I think there is a place to sit at almost all of them, but they're all uncovered.
And it's like one seat.
I just forgot how hot it gets in the summer and.
Yep.
And it got cold.
So this might be like, like a presentation or something when we get a conversation going.
Uh, yeah, I'm less interested myself in a presentation than just an update sent to us about where they're at with it. And just see if there's something, something that we can work on, that we can back channel with them and move forward on.
Okay.
I'll start by reviewing whatever the latest C I P says about words.
Councilor Colay?
I don't know if we're done with transportation, but are we gonna jump to other sections? Are we gonna go back to it linearly, linearly, or are we just kinda?
I think, I think you identified community engagement as the next section.
Yeah, and I skipped, I skipped a couple of councilors, so I, I guess when we get, we get through the list, happy to return to.
Are we done with transportation? Alright.
On, on the community engagement, I, I just wanted to acknowledge. You know, the, the shift of the server of the, of the city website really. Set that whole project backwards. To me, addressing those things that have fallen off the website and functionality that we've lost is really important. Uh, both for transparency, the professionalism appearance of the city, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I, that, that to me is A, A plus on this.
Can I make a comment on that? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, also, uh, I really feel like this work in, uh, in conjunction with. Maybe folks from planning, maybe, uh, you know, maybe a representative from planning, um, urban renewal for sure. Uh, just making sure that we're touched base with, um, you, really high level users and finding out. I mean, there's obviously the resident facing component that needs to be addressed. But also there, um, a lot of research work has been done in the past on the, on the website. Um, even like finding old records and things like that, um, so just checking, doing that work with stakeholders. Um, but yeah, really excited to hear that as a priority.
Um, in terms of, uh, economic development. You know, I, I think. I, I would be really excited to, to start some work under goal one. You know, the economic opportunities analysis, I think is a good way for, for you all to. Uh, provide some input on how we, how we begin tackling that.
Councilor Byers?
Sorry, I want to go back really quickly to community engagement. Goal two. Action item A, being quarterly chair summit. I think this is really important and I think, um, we could set some goals for what each of those chair summits cover. And I'm wondering if we could expand this to be on the chair to X amount of. Uh, if it's a publicly noted meeting, then to all of them. And I think there are, there's at least one in here that should cover required information to know. What about keeping public? Records and.
O G E C concerns and.
Yeah, all of that.
Councilor Colay?
Yeah, I really like that idea and I'm, I like the idea of opening it to other committee members as well. Cause I think if we can incorporate into that. Some type of new member training, um, that would be really helpful to have a venue that's offered for that. Cause people sign up and get on a committee and they, there's just so much information that they really need to know before.
So I think really what we're talking about, cause everything is described really on here except. Now it's all here, A and B, everything that we just mentioned, just reprioritizing those two items. Yeah.
I think it would also be really supportive of the committee chairs. Um, and the folks who rotate through that role. So that we're making sure the same information was consistently communicated to whoever is in those roles. Um, and not requiring each chair to, um, not expecting the same training to come from each chair. When the, when those are individual folks and if I, I think sticking with that training would be really valuable.
Great, great comment, Councilor Byers.
It seems like around now would be a good time, because this is really getting your chairs on all the. So next week.
I, I will just mention that Hector, I think has pulled together a really nice onboarding that he's been sending to each of the new. Uh, chairs that really lays out. A, a lot of what you all are talking about.
Right. Maybe, uh, maybe Hector could lead, Hector, he's like, oh, she's putting a monkey on my back now. Uh, maybe Hector could lead that initial training once a year that you were talking about. Like there, to me, that, that there's a possibility where that. That can all intersect. Uh, around that idea, that's really good news. Alright, so then, any other questions about community engagement?
Thank you for letting me walk that back.
Apologies for rushing you all if I have.
And the next section we're going to is.
Economic development.
And the color is orange, orange, another orange one. Now we're in order, I gotcha. Okay.
I was not totally sure, um, economic development cohort, exactly what that was referring. To the one A there. I do know that where you, you have sort of bylaws and structures for, for a committee that I don't believe is active.
Yeah, I, um, it says it needs more information. Does anybody recall? I mean, I think it was just city manager, community partners. Does anybody recall any specifics around that discussion? I don't. Um, but you're right, there is a structure for a committee. And, um. One of the things I'm hoping for is especially now that we're hearing reports coming, uh, economic analysis reports coming in. And I, and I don't know if that's gonna be then an update to the comp plan.
This is. Right, it is, it's not, it's a. The A is different, is not the technical term of a, the kind of document that is an appendix to the. The economic element of a comp plan, it's a more sort of down and dirty actual.
On the ground, yeah.
Analysis to inform strategy rather than necessarily new day plan goals of a comp plan.
Well, given the fact that there's a consultant involved and also in concert with your background. It would be nice to get some of that, some of that assembled before we reconvene that committee. Just because the, it, it really. Put them on a raft out to sea all by themselves the last time without enough of that. So, I mean, they, they were working off of the comp plan, but it just wasn't. Uh, just as you said, it wasn't as on the ground, like actual action items, so. I, I don't know if like it even makes sense for us to identify a point at which we start to talk about convening that meeting. Or the amount of work that gets done before we start, but certainly that's what I think would work. Well. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Councilor Panamarev?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to, so we're gonna have some economic analysis, right? That's practical. And I can see how that would be useful. I'm not, in, in, there is the, uh, mission, the economics commission that's been dormant for a number of years. Um, I'm just wondering how, why that's priority level A, it seems like. I'm glad we're getting that economic information, because that's something that council can use, right? And for, for direction, but I'm not sure that we need, you know, whether the cohort or the commission and all of that. Is that something we need, um, soon or later? And I'm, I'm asking.
I, I think we're saying the same thing. I think we're, we're all saying that this is probably not a high level priority and certainly not until we have more analysis.
Okay, so we can just kind of even bump that down to like next year kind of thing.
I mean, I wouldn't. I wouldn't, it wouldn't, it makes perfect sense to do that to me.
Yeah, okay.
Again, I think having, having something to work on, uh, is, was the, have, not having something to work on was the failure of the last effort.
Right, yeah.
Right.
So this will be more kind of, you know, the staff analysis and, and working with council. So until, until there's something to climb out. Okay.
Uh, the one, one piece that does seem immediate and relevant to me is, I started talking to some of the local property owners. Uh, local property owners and would like, like to have, well, will have informal group. That's, um, also looking at the gateway R F P. So we're, we're getting input from.
I would assume that that's part of the, I, that's part of the work that Cosma has already been doing, isn't it? It's my understanding. That was my understanding anyway, that they were.
Yes, there's some detail, there is some discussion of, of gateway, yes, absolutely. But if they didn't have the specific R F P that responded.
Oh, gotcha, and, but it wasn't broader than gateway?
It was, it is, yes.
Okay, very good, alright, thank you, it's work in progress.
The Cosma document is pretty much done and does have some recommendations about gateway. That obviously did not have input off the specific, specific R F P because they didn't have that.
Right. Okay. I guess the point I was trying to get to, and I still think it might be relevant to know, um, is they, my understanding is they were doing. Uh, they were also doing across the city analysis as well. And that's gonna be a part of that report, right? Irrespective, is irrespective actually a word? Somebody challenged me on that.
Irregardless is not a word.
Okay, yeah, okay, irrespective of, um, irrespective of the gate, the gateway R F P, thank you.
And so I think. The go, the goal two, I think. Belong, either belongs in other places or is in the same category as what we, um, just talked about. Um, the stronger destination, I think, um, you know, is, is a mix of, of, uh. Of projects that, and I think the priority ones show up in other places already. But I think, I think further the. Uh, on the economic development portion.
Oh, sorry.
Councilor Panamarev?
I'm just seeing that, uh, under goal three become a stronger destination on, it's like all the park stuff is on there. Parks, 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 murals. Do, should we go through those, uh, individually and see? Cause we, we did talk about. Should we go through those individually and just see where we're at with those? So tennis courts is like of a a lower priority because of the funding. Sorry, I'm looking at you, Lana. Uh so tennis courts, we said, is a is a a lower priority because we're not competitive for the funding, but. Resurfaced skate park is a go, right?
Um it's not that it's lower priority, it's just that the very first priority is the cost to the city and the parks. Um fund is the water repurposing. And then immediately after that is are the courts. Um there's such a stated community move to that and then right like if. Right beside that left slightly adjacent to it is the larger dog park.
But if we, so you know, those are the priorities of what parks would like to have happen, but as priorities as far as what we do next year, Alex, maybe this I didn't understand your point. Was that the funding, we are not competitive for the funding for for the tennis court, so it's not something that we're going to say get this done this year. Right? So that's to me what the priority follow is.
Well, and I will add to that, like there's this. Momentum within the parks commission to get a foundation established, which could change the funding possibilities quite a bit.
Yeah.
That would be cool, yeah. So again, like, you know, I know that staff input is required on that process.
No, a- absolutely, thank you. And that's actually the note that I had. Myself was that that supportive that discussion maybe maybe in the right place.
Uh you mean putting that in as a goal, supporting the foundation? Yeah, really great.
Yeah, new new funding source, whatever that may be.
Yeah, Council Colay?
I think that's a good, that's one good way to, I mean, that's a specific goal, but that's one good way to put it, but also on here is prioritize parks projects. Which kind of captures all the parks projects that are on here. So I don't know if that one gets deleted or I don't, yeah. You all can decide, but um.
It's in case I mixed missed one.
I think you, I think it was actually referring to the question last year. But um there there are a number of things on here that need to be crossed off because they've been completed. Or or on ongoing work, please. Congratulations.
And and with.
Yeah.
Well, also the commission, I mean, the parks commission hats off, they did great work this last year.
I.
Counsel Colay?
Um I don't know if this is part of that economic analysis that you're talking about that we'll see sometime soon, or if it's under a different. Section here, but it seems like economic development. I think there's always, you know, question and concern by citizens of like empty lots, especially when they haven't been, you know, the things that were there that haven't been rebuilt. And I know there was some, you know. Discussion between staff and landowners to get some of them cleaned up last year that hadn't been cleaned up, but I don't know. You know, where that falls under the economic development piece, but. Working with landowners to like obviously on here identify appropriate essential businesses, like that's one vein of it, but working with those landowners to understand what their barriers are. Why they haven't rebuilt or why they aren't developing supposedly, you know, prime lots that are in. Especially like the downtown core. The pizza oven. Pizza oven goal, that could just be one.
Um. Counsel Byers?
Kind of on that note, I I am wondering if um. Continuing engagement with the ID. Should be a part of our economic goal.
Wouldn't that be under gateway? The gateway was?
No, I don't think so. I think uh only because it's, I mean, the gateway is a piece of that.
Okay.
But it's a the the piece of land itself is a much broader question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, good one.
Wow, um moving on to sustainable foundation, which is really the the administrative. Pieces and. Thank you. I'm I'm happy to hear, you know, council comments on this, but I think I think. Progress on. A lot of these runs is uh. Is really, really important. There's there's some different sort of levels of detail here. Some I feel like some of some of which belong to this document, maybe not all of them, but um. Yeah, wel- welcome in comments.
Well. I think that we've seen a lot of progress in this area. Um I think there are areas that we still um we still need to continue to push. One, I don't know if this fits on this list, it might fit on a different list, but one of the one of the things. Um I foresee, especially this coming late spring and into the summer is with all of this rain that we're going to have one of the worst weed seasons that we've had in a long time. And I know it's a it's a struggle. Anyway, because we have a pest management or a it's not pest management, what is it? Um you know, it's.
Integrated.
No herbicides.
Test management.
Yeah, is it a is it a pest management?
IPM, yeah, integrated pest management.
I thought it was something else, but um anyway, no herbicides um can be used to kill the weeds, so or limited, I think is what it is. Um so we've we've set a challenge for the city that we acknowledge, but I think we're also heading into one of the worst seasons of the year. And my hope is that we can come up with a plan prior to that. Um and. Um consider what we need to consider to stay in front of it. Um I. Yeah, I I I guess what I'm asking for is a plan, a literal plan for. For for maintenance and um for property maintenance and then not just in. Like the. The sidewalks and medians and all those things, but um. In the parks as well. Counsel Colay?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that a little bit. I think it's also under, it's kind of tied to the um fuels reduction project that's under, I think, or it's under community safety. A lot of attention has been paid, especially to the greenway after the fire, tons and tons of money's been thrown there. Finally Wagner Creek's getting dealt with somewhat, but there's barriers it sounds like that are arising. Um. I I think the greenway will end up with, you know, some sort of cohesive. Plan at some point, who knows about the potential district, but yeah, I thinking, I think having some sort of. You know, the natural areas that aren't the greenway, some sort of vegetation management plan, maintenance plan. Um so that people aren't shocked when they see that type of work happening, so that we develop some type of culture of like. This is what needs to happen in order to prevent catastrophic fire and home destruction in town. Um. I don't know if it's a separate thing for natural areas and a separate thing for other city properties, but I think. Examining and maybe having some sort of public input on like what that looks like, because it's like you mentioned, it's hard for the city alone to do, it's hard for people that don't have. The resources on their private properties to do. Um. I'd I'd love to see some collective community effort on how to like guide that process, um whether it's. Potential financial resources for private citizens, it goes into the firewise thing as well, but I think it needs to be a a priority.
Alex, is some of that um funding that would be in partnership with the fire district, would some of that cover what Counsel Colay is talking about? And I think there's a grant fund being pursued, right?
It would certainly fund a lot of the implementation of the things that the council is mentioning. Um it. I sort of, I definitely skipped over that section, I think that might have been the section that. Counselor, yeah, was interested in going back to.
Um goal, goal to community safety, yeah.
Yeah. Um. And so the one goal one we we've certainly talked about and uh goal two.
Are we on a different?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Community safety.
Okay.
I I didn't mean to jump us to the other section, but it ties into what you were saying there about. Yeah.
Yeah, so that might be a better place for what I was talking about too. Sorry, go ahead, Alex.
The um. One of the questions that I have uh for you all. It really goes to just what the counselor was saying. Um and that is. Right, that the the city has the opportunity to apply for funds for the implementation of this work. Um or a lot, not this one, but a lot of work, you know, related thing. Um. Become a firewire wise and fire resistant community is on on here, and I think a lot of the planning that the council was talking about. Um. Is at at minimum related to that. Um. And. Um a lot of firewise work is more bottom up sort of neighborhood level and aggregating from there. Um and so I think it's. Um I mean, as I I think about our staff and our staff capacity, it's quite, that's. Quite a bit of work and I'm not sure who of our existing personnel. Um, you know, it would um. It it would fit very much with a um a position that was dedicated to disaster preparedness, which we do not have. Um but I don't see it in the existing FTE count.
You don't see it where?
In the existing FTE count.
So it would either need to be staffed or grant a grant would need to be for a consultant. Is that right?
And um yes, yes, that's right. I'm not sure, I'm not. I'm not familiar with how fundable that is, you know, right now.
And I'm I'm going to ask this question just because it's the responsible thing to do. Are you looking at the current FTEs and the assignments of those FTEs? Prior to looking at, you know, whether or not reassigning somebody, it makes as much sense as adding an FTE, that kind of thing?
Um. I'm looking at it from the standpoint of. With very few exceptions, maybe exception. Um I don't see. I don't see any staff that have, you know, a half FTE uh uh half time. Not dedicated to sort of critical ongoing operations, you know, that are related to the things that we've been talking about already today.
Counsel, Counsel Byers and then Counsel Colay?
Um. So I'm hearing two parts of this. One is a discussion of a weed management plan for the summer, which I think is totally on the city and really necessary.
Right.
But then I'm hearing the other part of the the conversation where we're discussing like how to support a more firewise unity. And it's interesting that this we're having this discussion right now, since yesterday I was um. Talking with someone who serves at the state level board of insurance agencies. And. He was sharing with me how I I have our insurance companies going to begin incentivizing, like getting your home certified as firewise. Anything um along those lines, and he had said. That. Insurance companies are waiting to see who else is going to take which actions before they offer that sort of incentivizing. Which I thought was really interesting. Um he said it is simply the last.
The last to what?
The table. So I think about like the potential partnership with Fire District Five to at least begin education on. That and I'm wondering if that could be a together for talent project. Like really advocating for that level of education at a community level.
Counsel Colay?
I know Fire District Five has some like small like $250 home assessment grants and then that kind of stuff, and I don't think that's. I don't know if it's part of the fire, like firewise is like a trademarked program or whatever, like a big umbrella thing, so I don't know how those interface. I think there would absolutely be. Coordination and partnership on whatever this thing is with Fire District Five. I also wonder. I've got the funding opportunity, if there's potential for partnership with. One of the neighboring communities, Phoenix or Ashland would be the obvious candidates um being involved in the Almira, but also especially with Phoenix just being like. Smaller community with less resources, I don't know. You know, how much FTE this I put, what even the position is or how much FTE it is, but I think. I think it's something we have to think about and it's one of those things that like. It well, it looks expensive right now, but we know how expensive.
Well, I'm wondering if something that could first be a committee. First push, which can prove the need, which then can support the grant that would be written. And that collaboration and outreach to another community or school district to help with that sort of education level might make. Some sort of grant funding like that even more competitive and also provide a good structure for outreach to families. Well, that's something about that sort of education is available and potentially offered in a bilingual. Facility.
I see a difference. Um in what I think I'm hearing and that one would would be the potential for community organizing and perhaps even policymaking. At the committee level and then an FTE that would be responsible for implementation and perhaps even. I mean, I don't want to say code enforcement because I know we have code enforcement, but um but. You know, one seems very passive, necessary. And. Productive and also. Um. Also, another piece of it could be more firm. And mandated and um and then enforced. Um. And I don't think you can, I don't think you can affect the latter with the former, I guess is what I'm saying, unless you have policy and. Uh and code enforcement do that, but I don't know. Do you want to cough up? I um I uh it would be my throwing, not your catching, Chief. Um I uh. Just started hearing, uh Counsel Colay?
And I think too, just to like maybe tie it up on the vegetation management thing, if there is. I mean, we experienced it this last break with, you know, staff turnover and shortages of stuff, if the city can't effectively maintain its own vegetation, but is then going and. Enforcing on the people that they need to do it, they're not going to be happy about that and going to complain and say, you know, why is this? City owned natural area looking like this, but I have to. Buy weeds, so getting getting both of those, I mean, getting the city's vegetation management plan clearly out there is first.
Can I ask a quick question of staff? I'm just going back to the. Uh the kind of public property maintenance discussion a little bit. Um. I know that we've used temporary staff. In the past, and my understanding is it does a little heartburn at the union level. I'm wondering if um. If if we started having the conversations earlier in this year, just like talking about what we're actually going into and facing. If. If we could actually make, develop that as part of the plan. On an annual basis of being able to hire. I don't know, I might not understand the actual challenge, but I just thought since you were new, since you're new, I I. Uh flag it for you in case. You could have conversations maybe with Gary about it, about how it's been in the past, but my understanding is it's been challenging.
There there is a very clear communication on. Here, as discussed, the what was done last year. Um and so thank you, yes, and I do think. Not dropping it on them, uh giving them time to digest it um and you know, have conversations about. The reality and I appreciate this again. Um the thing that I just remembered that Chief and I I actually talked about earlier today. Was the the issues that you were all just talking about um may really belong in the public safety being discussion. May really belong in the public safety discussion. If the city really does need some dedicated personnel. The issues of fire, that is public safety issue. And we may want to consider including that in the in the larger public, public safety discussion again next year.
Counselor Prestizo.
Remembering it. Last year at some point, we had a big. Conversation at a meeting about. The weeds and, you know, how to keep up with them and not using pesticides and the time it seemed like. There was a thought about having volunteers helping out, and I'm just wondering if that's really a viable option. To include trying to do, or is it more trouble trying to organize volunteers than. You know, the actual workout that you get out of them.
I would not hazard an opinion on that, Counselor, right now, but I think it's a good question.
Counselor Byers.
I think it might be more effective if instead of looking for a volunteer task force to like work on weed throughout the city if. Working with different entities to adopt a single location that was theirs to maintain for the summer. I think that might be a more targeted and effective.
Yeah, I remember I was identifying where. The need is getting groups to associate with. I'm not sure the city has identified, you know, where the public can see. Where those places are and start to. But there's a level of effort around just getting that done, so.
Counselor Penamra.
Together for Talent used to have a weed team that would go around and do that. I, that was a little bit before my time. I'm not sure how well that worked. And the other thing was with the bioswells, the council was actually given a spa, a bioswell to that we were supposed to maintain. This was before the fire. Didn't cause the fire.
Weed fires? Yeah.
Uh, the one by the roundabout. That's actually a bioswelle. So RVSS came out and trained us which weeds to pull and which weeds not to pull.
I think I missed that party.
We did. But we hadn't signed it.
Yeah, I think, I think sustainability is always the concern when you have volunteer efforts on something that. Is like ongoing maintenance. But. I think the the fact that Together for Talent used to do it and doesn't do it anymore, once the leader of that charge. Passed away is kind of commentary about that, so. If we did go that route. Something super organized and super. Coordinated.
Well, I think it would have to be coordinated by a staff person to really have a hope of longevity. At least that's been my experience.
Thank. To, like Anna mentioned. You can either have like specific people adopt areas. Or another way that would probably more effectively use volunteers is to do like one or two days. Tie it to the free yard debris drop off or, you know, do our own free yard debris drop off in a city lot. And, you know, kind of develop the force that way and send people out and the prioritization can be done ahead of time. Because we have, you know, the date that the weed ordinance goes into effect. You kind of know like in May and June, what's what's going on, so I think. That would be, and that also would just like a good collective community way to like. Get started and build community and build a culture of like, oh, we do this every spring. Go help out like the person who doesn't have the resources to do it. So I think that's, and that's important to me in this conversation too, is it's not just the public property or the city property, it's. The weird little interstitial spaces in the neighborhood that, you know, nobody knows who actually maintains it, but it's really on like. Property owners to do.
I just want to say, I just want to say that. If we, if we're, if we're seriously considering this. My suggestion would be that we make the planning of it, the goal for this year and the organizing of it, the goal for this year. And 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 then just for this year, come up with a. A, a, a maintenance plan and just to quickly add to that. Maintenance plan would also be like, do we need to revisit our policy to get property owners to? You know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the struggle code enforcement has. Getting people to cut down their dangerous. Fields, but do we need to revisit that? Because I know it's been really challenging in the past. I can think of a couple of people that. Have neighbors that. Have explosive yards every year and and it just doesn't seem like whatever our rules are. Are enough to get them to do the work that they need to get done. So just adding that piece to it is reviewing the policy. I'm going to go to Tessa and then Counselor Penamra.
No, Chief, I was pointing at you.
Chief, oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, one thing that I think having the idea of having volunteers assist with the weed pulling around town is a great idea. However, however, I do think that we do need to double check with our insurance carrier to make sure that this is something that is not frowned upon.
They'd have quite a. They presented to us recently and had quite a list of things that we we need to do, so like that is why I think it's important to organize around it. Thank you for that point.
Thank you.
Chief.
I'm already circling around on this, but. It's hard for us to endure something that's seen. Has not been applied yet, and so that's pretty much where we, that's putting our middle of the property owners. And so I think if we are officially able to get ahead of that. When I take it years past, we only do the issue of these sentations. It's really just trying to get compliance, but it's pretty public we know. That we all lack or that those same properties, so hopefully maybe sharing can.
That does put your code enforcement officer in a pre-op position, doesn't it? Yeah, totally. Counselor Penamra.
Well, I was pretty freaked out when I got the letter that it was going to be like $500 a day that I was. Am I the only rule follower in this town? I don't know.
No, I don't think so. I mowed my lawn.
Yeah.
Or my, my property. Okay. Counselor Penamra.
I've got a couple more goals to add.
How are we doing for time, Alex? Are we, are you on track? Are you feeling good?
So when in, when we passed the resolution for the natural gas thing, we talked about. Looking for a grant for like a rare participant for staff, so. I would like to see that if the council agrees as 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 a goal is to look for. A grant funded. A staff position or half staff position to work on some of these sustainability issues, and it could be even what we've just been talking about. Reduce fuel reduction. But to to characterize the goal as looking for grants to fund. Like a rare participant or some other staff person. So that's one thing.
Respectfully, I, I. I don't think the grant, seeking grant funding for is the driver. I think. What we want to get done should be the the driver. And so you're, you. You're suggesting that. And I I'm looking at the sustainability page and you started with natural gas.
Yeah, so sustainability and, yeah. In terms of our environmental goals and our. Our climate goals.
Are we moving? Are we moving to sustainability in this conversation? Just want to track here.
That's where I was, sustainability.
Okay.
And it's actually a, something that we resolved to do. In the resolution. Which was before your time, I can send you that.
So it's implementing the.
Yeah, Clean Energy Action Plan or Clean Energy Element.
Of the comp plan?
Yes.
And are we on sustainability?
Yeah.
Become more drought tolerant, reduce carbon footprint.
And then I have another one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so this one is what I think is more of like a cross cutting across all areas goal. But I think it'd be nice to have it captured in goal, you know, it's really probably more of council goal than staff goal. But to to advocate for our community with appropriate agencies. And officials at all levels of government. I think we have been doing that. Do you see? Other things. But I think especially now it's important.
And and does it belong here?
I think, I think it's a cross cutting one. I'm not sure what what category it could go in. I don't know if there's other like. Goals that.
Kind of like sustainable footing. Sustainable foundation.
Sustainable what?
Sustainable foundation, it's kind of under there.
Yeah, sustain, but that was more kind of administrative, like it's like the nuts and bolts of the city. And this is almost more not of the day to day, but of our role. As a council is advocates for the community as part of the government. Ecosystem. To use what power we have to advocate for our community.
My, my quandary is, does this belong, does that belong in this document at all? I sort of see this as goals for the staff to carry out. On behalf of the council. I, I'm not to say that there isn't a document.
All of my goals today.
You know what? That's a good point. I wonder if that's a better resolution.
Well, it's kind of the founding, I don't know, I see this as the, is the council and the committees and the staff all working pretty together. I mean, we have who's going to do it, community. You know, committees and and other things. I don't know, I feel, but I also feel it's kind of a, something that. Kind of crosses multiple sectors. I think maybe how you were talking about. Last time you were talking about. EDI or something. I think.
It's almost like you're saying staff support for council and committee and commission members during that work.
I cannot hear you. Can you get your voice a little louder?
It's almost like you're saying. The goal would somehow be connected to staff supporting council members and maybe commissioners. In that work.
Yeah, it could be. I don't see it as a something that requires a lot of staff time, but we do have resolutions.
Right.
That come up like this, and I, and I feel that this is part of our work. To me, the goals is like, this is our work. So.
Counselor Medina.
Yeah, I'm, I don't see a lot of like, I don't know, you would know more than me, but I don't see a lot of likes. From what I know, staff work with this, but there would still be some staff work, like especially the part where we. Work together with other organizations, like, you know, if they need to reach out and stuff. But so that's why I kind of think like there is a place in this for it somewhere.
Counselor Harry Miller.
Um, it almost is like a more just like overarching. Job description of a city counselor, I think, is to be advocates. For the community with local and regional partners, you know, and like we can do that individually, but we can also do that as a group. So. Whether or not it is something that takes staff time, I guess that would be a conversation to have with staff in the moment, but kind of feels like. Something we should be thinking about all the time. Is that sort of what you're thinking is like?
Question is whether this is in this document, and it's like, well, I think it'd be good in this document, but I don't know if there's agreement.
Counselor Medina, then Alex.
You have a question. Is this anywhere in any document? That we have?
I wonder if there's a reference to it in the charter, but I'm not certain that there would be.
Yeah, because I'm hearing like, you know, it's more like a job description, it's more like an overarching thing, but like if you don't have it written somewhere and then we're not here.
It's not going to happen. Alex.
I think I, my thought at the moment. Um, is if we, if you all wanted in this document, I'd suggest that it's. In a separate category than. Than how it's currently structured. And I would also. Encourage you to spend some time thinking about what else belongs. In that category. Because it is, to me, it's, it's a different category than I've been thinking about as I've been working on. So I think. I'll plan to bring that back and maybe you all want to split it off or keep it as part of the study.
Counselor Byers.
Alternatively, it could be a part of every single one of the things. Categories here, and so I, to your point, like it, it could be baked into every aspect of. Our goal setting process, or it could be the standalone umbrella that's above it all. I see both directions, but I appreciate you asking like what else would go in that category that was just on the zone.
The only thing that I would like to see clarified in this conversation is. I see the goals as something that we hold the staff accountable to. And I don't. I see this type of advocacy as part of the function of the elected official and that it's really not the function of staff. To represent the constituency, that's our role. And so where that, those two things intersect might be a place for discussion, but I don't know where that would be. Like, I don't, I just. I've had a chance to think about it and I can't think about where that would be. I wouldn't want to hold staff. Accountable to that, because.
That's not their function.
That's not their function and they represent the entire, I mean, they they work for the entire city at the direction of the council. So. Yeah, I. I appreciate the need to declare this as a function of what we do, and I understand that point, but I just don't know that this. I don't see how this is. The, where the point to do that is. And I, I, I'm asking for some further clarification. Counselor Penamra.
Well, I'm also thinking about, you know, after the fire, um, going to all the meetings. You know, basically to advocate for the community, the housing, things, the. Cleanup and just kind of keeping in, in, in touch with the regional efforts and making sure we were advocating for our community. You were there, you know, and and like when we would say like, oh, you know, language access, that was a big thing. Advocating with the state and all of that. Um, I'm not sure, it's all a blur. I don't remember how much city staff. Had to do to support that if if they did at all, or whether we were just bringing that back and reporting back. I'm really not sure. But that's kind of, that's, that's one thing that might contextualize it a little bit.
Counselor Colley.
Just to go back to the. Conversation of like where this sentiment lives or idea lives, I mean, there is, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there some function of the city staff to do? Networking and advocacy with other agencies and. Communities and and things like that. On behalf of the city of town, like to go to, you know, regional working groups and attend those types of meetings. I mean, some of us do that as like committee. Members, but. My understanding, I mean, it's usually the city manager, but. Or interface with the, you know, Bedford Water Commission or, yeah.
Yeah, and it seems to me that it's more staff to staff kind of thing, you know, it's like operations to operations as opposed to. I, I mean, my understanding of what you're talking about is like advocacy on behalf of the constituents in. Like legislation and am I misunderstanding it?
It definitely could be that, but it could, but it could also be more, you know, this is what we need from the state to to function. It could be. Yeah. Or this is, and and sometimes, you know, we need to know. If like if federal funds are just. If we find that out from staff.
So I guess what I'm trying to get in my brain is what is the different, what is different than those powers are baked in already to the council? Our ability to. Our ability to, to ask staff to represent something on behalf of the city for more funding or whatever is already baked into our authority. So I'm not sure, like, what is it? What's the objective of the goal? It's really what I'm having a hard time grasping.
Well, maybe just to make sure that that is understood. I mean, you can assume that it's baked in, but there can be, you know, push. We've had pushback from staff in the past of what we thought the role of the council was. But again, years ago, staff thought the role it might just be good to, to get, you know, that crystal clear.
I gotcha. I, that, that, that helps. Uh, Counselor Medina?
Yeah, so yeah, I get that like it's baked in and everything, but I've worked in different organizations where like, you know, depending who is in the seat, it's like, well, do we really bring those values out or not? And that can really deeply change roles and what ends up happening in an organization. This may not be the proper place to put this, but if it's not anywhere else, I really encourage us to find a place where it should.
The council rules certainly appeared to me to be one place.
Oh, you don't know. Sorry, we spit a lot.
It's painful, I understand.
Don't say, I'm glad Dave's not here.
I've already started a list of things to bring up the next time you all go back to that. But I, it, I, Counselor Penamara, I don't think it gets to the, to all of what you want to say, but I think it is certainly relevant and should have in addressed as a piece of what you, what that would need to say. Anyway.
Well, I.
Sorry, I, I, what I need to say is I, I don't think that's necessarily a complete fix. But I do think it's a, it's, it's a necessary thing if that's the coun, the council's sense and wants to memorialize it. That, that's the logical document.
The goals or the council rules?
The council rules.
Yeah. So I mean, I think it, hearing everything, would it be, and we, I realize this is sort of belaboring the point at this point, but would it be okay for everybody for us to take a look at that additional piece to the goals? Something maybe that's just called council goals or council focus or whatever, just so that it has some some clarity that it is not necessarily some, something we're holding. Uh, these aren't action items for the, the, for the staff, but they are something that we, we expect to be able to interface on over the course of the year. So that separate section is what I'm referring to. Counselor Penamara?
So maybe not as a part of the plan because it doesn't fit the structure, but maybe it's just a preamble. You know, it's understood that. Oh, you're saying preamble? Did I flick that out of your brain?
Well, it was there, but now.
Because I stole it from you. Very loudly.
I'm trying to get out of the way of this like superpower that's going on here. Like there's some kind of psychic thing happening here.
Preamble that said something to, to the effect of what we said and, and could even talk about, you know, and we're all working together to create a welcoming community and stuff like that. Just kind of a, kind of a nice little preamble about, you know, the role of council and staff and blah, blah, blah. Yeah.
That's kind of cool. Good job. How does everybody feel about that?
I love, I love Dave's idea. Thank you for telling us.
I, I don't know. I felt the psychic exchange here and I was like nerve wracking.
I don't know where these ideas come from, but now I do.
All right.
Awesome. I get, I got exactly what I needed. My, my plan would be to bring back to you a document that reorganizes this a little bit. And I'm going to give you also a list of anything that I took out. So you can see that sort of transparently.
Counselor Penamara?
One last thing. I had my, my mental notes too. We had a goal about closing out Tura. And I don't, I don't think we need to do that, especially if we, we, we haven't been getting money for, for a long time. But eventually we might want to consider it again. Do we have to close it out?
Well, I would like, I would hope for a, like, a, a benefit analysis on keeping it open compared to, are we spending any money on it? Like, like, does it cost us money to have it open rather than transferring the balance to the city? Transferring the objectives to the city, transferring all this stuff to the city. And just as an analysis sometime during the year would be, I mean, I think you were talking about maybe even looking at what properties there are and, you know, like that conversation. Like I think that's what would be helpful in this year is for us to be prepared to answer those questions next year. Rather than just heading for a hard shutdown, like what does, what does a shutdown look like? What would we have to complete? Maybe just building in the plan for that. Are you still thinking about the question?
No, I was thinking about my last question.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, it's a good of the order thing.
What's that?
Good of the order.
Oh, yeah, for the, anything else for the good of the order?
Yes. Yeah, so I was at a, an RV cog offshoot meeting. Apparently that Axis has been leasing a kitchen to Food and Friends. There, so they're, they're kicking, they're not, they're not continuing the lease. So they'll be out, they won't have a kitchen as of August, as the end of, end of August.
They is?
Uh, Food and Friends, which is the Meals on Wheels for Jackson, in Jackson County. So they're looking for a, you know, a commercial kitchen that can make like 1,400 meals a day. It's a big deal. And, and they were paying a good, good rent. Good rent, but not enough for access to, for it to pencil out, for access. So they wanted to double the rent or something like that.
And do they want to look at this kitchen? Is that what?
Well, I was going to ask, no, I, I didn't, I didn't offer the kitchen or anything. I was just going to ask because they have specific needs. Uh, uh, just the quantity of stuff that they have to do. So I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, somebody who used to be an event, Food and Beverage Director. Pumping 1,400 meals a day out of that kitchen would be nearly impossible. It's just not, it's probably one third the size it would need to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
You would also have to be able to store food onsite.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, they have, they have a list of the things that they would need to, to make it work, so.
But I think storage would make that facility unrivable to anyone else.
Yes, that said, I do think there's room for a conversation for us to really start to put our heads together about utilizing this kitchen.
I think it was like over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I'm, I have no objection to the rent. It's, it's really, I, I'm sure, I'm certain they would come and look at it. Like, no way could they.
Yeah, I think there's actually measurements that they have that we would know whether.
Right? So to that point, do you still want us to consider inviting them out to look at it? And then if that's the case, I'd want to, I'd want to be able to entertain staff recommendations on that before we did that.
Yeah, I think there'll be a press release coming out and I think they'll, they'll have like specific requirements. And somebody will just know that that, that probably doesn't need the requirements as far as measurements go.
Okay.
So, so I don't think you need to do anything. I just was, you know, putting it out there in the
Into the universe.
Into the ether. So if people know of anything that might work.
Great. And if that changes, if we do want to invite them, let's, let's, again, let's make, make sure staff has an opportunity to make a recommendation on it. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will close this meeting at 5:06.
Awesome. Thank you all.